Counselor Duhae.
I yield to Counsel Russell.
Thank you, Counselor Duhae. To you to Mr. Seki, I think you probably know I am going to ask you. I'm very concerned about the bookmobile closing. If you're so short of help, how are you going to get services out to the people who rely on the bookmobile?
Let me assure you, Counsel Russell, absolutely assure you, absolutely confidentially assure you.
Confidentially?
We're on television now.
This is not confidential.
But there's no serious problem. We have analyzed the bookmobile operation. We know there are only 145 users in the bookmobile. That's the extent of it. We've gone through a two-year period. We found that the 140 users, one, two at one stop, three at another stop. We also identified 26 elderly persons who use the bookmobile regularly. Twenty-six. Of the 26, we have already contacted and talked with 22 of them. Of the 22, five are disabled or handicapped. And already, already, beginning weeks ago, they're getting a personalized delivery service, a service that we've always had in the library. We deliver between 75 and 100 books to 11 housing complexes, elderly housing complexes, as well as to nine nursing homes in the city. They're made deliveries. We have a person who visits these nursing homes, who visits the housing complexes, meets with the people, interviews the people in terms of their taste and interest, and we put together a group of books, 50 to 100 books, and they're changed every month. In addition, in addition, we provide a personal delivery service of books every three weeks. We used to do that for 26 people. That number has been raised now to 33 since the closure of the bookmobile. Mrs. Dillon meets with those individuals. She talks and finds what their interests are in books. She sends them books. Once every three weeks, there's a personal delivery. And the charge also is if they finish reading those books before the three weeks is up, call Mrs. Dillon, she'll make the delivery. I really don't see it. We've not, the library has had two complaints, only two complaints, since we put the bookmobile up. We had one person call and say, "I want to complain about the bookmobile." And I said, "Ma'am, do you use the bookmobile?" She says, "No, I don't use it, but a friend of Mr. Duhae's told me to call."
Sounds like a plot. Mr. Seki, how do you get the word out that this service is available? Do you advertise it?
Do we advertise? Yes, we've had two big stories in the paper. We have the working with the Department of Human Services, the Council of Aging, and the Division of the Elderly. It's no secret, we have all the housing projects, public and private. We deliver 150 books every month to the 100 Memorial Drive. We deliver 100 books to the Huron Towers.
Good thing.
We have, I am confident, professionally certain, that there is no serious or even minor problem in eliminating the bookmobile. You know, we have the serious problem of productivity as well. You know, I'm not a bottom-line man, but I have to be when I meet with Mr. Healy here, right? Because, you know, he's got his people around who do nothing but think of good questions to ask. And Jimmy Maloney is the finance guy who reads between the lines, you know? And Mr. Rossi here, you know, he keeps everybody happy, but he's got his signals with it.
Sounds like you've got them all pretty well down pat.
But seriously.
You've really analyzed the situation very well.
One driver in the bookmobile, if she's out sick, and she is out sick, or she's on vacation, okay? So that thing's off the road, two, three months at a time of the year. And I got those three people, the two full-time people, a page I never had because they can't keep pages on the bookmobile. For three months of the year, they're doing nothing.
Well, I would hope that if we have any people who want to avail themselves of the bookmobile and feel as though it's an unnecessary cut, or would like to find out about the service, that they would contact us.
I guarantee a personal delivery to any person who is disabled or handicapped.
You can do it yourself?
Living in a housing project, we will give them books, not new books, and we give them live-print books, and we give them the new titles. And Ruthie Dillon is probably the most dedicated, devoted person you can find in the city. And I mean that. One person does all this work, one person.
I have one more question. I had occasion to go to the main library to pick up an audio, you know, an audio cassette for some friends. And I found a very short supply of them. Is that because you don't have a lot of them, or are they so popular that they're always out?
Mr. Reeves was interested in the hearing impaired. I wanted him to know that we have videotapes now for hearing impaired. The audio cassettes, circulation jumped from about 60,000 to 78,000 this year, almost a 20 percent increase. Talking books, we have, must have at least 600 talking books, but you probably won't find more than 15 on the shelves.
That's just about what I found, yeah.
Students are using the talking books because they're using the books, they're using the talking cassette together with the high school textbook or their outside reading assignment. And it seems to be working. It really is working. We've got teachers, for example, who come in and borrow the British Broadcasting series on the Shakespearean series by the British Broadcasting Company, and they're showing the videotape of one of the Shakespearean plays while the kids are reading the thing or acting it out. It's not that we don't have them, it's that they're constantly out. English is a second language on cassettes, for example. We have almost 1,000, but you won't find more than 50, everybody, the Asians, the Koreans, the Cambodians, the Haitians, they're all in there using the cassettes, English is...
Do you have any Gaelic?
Yes, we do.
Well, that's good. I might have to borrow that one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman. My mom would be happy at home. If you give me one second, I will...
One second.
...get there. One of the services the library provides that I think is really important and probably not listed as something that you do, but which anybody can go into the Central Square Library at 3:00 in the afternoon, and it is the, where you find all the 12-year-old and older kids. One of the failures in our whole service delivery system is that we don't provide enough services for kids after they reach 12 years old, particularly latchkey kids who are home. And in the Central Square Library at 3:00 in the afternoon, you'll find 30 or 40 kids doing homework, reading books, looking at games upstairs, there are toys. It is a really critical service. It's one that I know tough on the staff. I know they work really hard and do some innovative things. I see people helping kids with homework. I don't know that that's in their job descriptions.
They do it at Central Square, they do. They do it in all the branches.
It is...
But they do it at Central Square, they do down at East Cambridge, they do it down at the Malenti Library in East Cambridge as well. And they're much, but they do it. Another interesting thing in Central Square, Counselors here, is that, you know, we're talking about pressures, but we've got such a debt, you know, the only great commodity we get in the library is not the money of the buildings, but the staff. For example, we had the children's librarian at the Central Square Library came to me and said she wanted to go out and tell storytelling to the homeless children. And we said, "He gets." You know, you get all these children that you see every afternoon. They bring in almost 200 daycare people every week. And she says, "I want to do it." And I says, "Can you do it for six months? Because if you can't do it for six months..." She said, "I want to do it for a full year." So we've had children librarians from the Central Square Library, and she, because of the peer pressure, we have a person from the main library going to the AME homeless, working with children. They go to the YWCA, working with the homeless, and they work with the daycare homeless children at the Salvation Army. And what's happening now is they're bringing the parents with the children into a party situation in the library.
The only problem I have with the service we provide to children over 12 is that it is essentially a catch-as-catch-can phenomenon. This is not a criticism of the library, but I think overall, I think the library has filled in in a remarkable way. It really is a quality, quality environment to have children in that age group. There's 12, 13, 14-year-olds. The idea that they're hanging out in the library instead of at almost anywhere else is very exciting. But we need, and I would hope that over time, that the library would be talking with the Department of Human Services in the various community schools about ways to formalize that program that has evolved so that parents can in fact know that that's where their kids are and feel secure about that. The idea that your 12-year-old you hope is waiting at the library would be, I would imagine for some parents, a bit unnerving, because as we all know, many, many parents are working till 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, even when we're closed. And that happens in all the libraries. Our staff generally stays behind, looks after them. They've developed a very liberal policy, the staff has, although they have some serious liability concerns. But related to the 12, 13, 14-year-old children, young people, if you go to the not Cambridge library, you'll see a whole area that's designated as a teen center. If you go down to the children's room at the main library, you'll see a whole area designated as a teen center. So we're beginning, it's been two years now, and we're beginning to address the teen problem in terms of having them relate to a special teen collection. Now, are parents involved in the evolution of that?
Parents, we have a regular program literally at all the libraries where parents and children come together at least once every three or four weeks in library programming.
But now I'm talking about the parents of these older children.
No, they're not involved.
Okay. I think that that might be an area, I know the Department of Human Services has had some success working with the kids up till that age. And maybe an area for us to explore is getting the library involved in that loop. And maybe later in the evening, we can ask the Human Services Department. But my request for you in this next budget year would be to at least have those, stop those discussions. Because I think the service you provide is immensely important and irreplaceable as far as I can see. But if we could integrate it into the overall childcare and after-school care program, it would be, I would argue, even more helpful to the parents who are depending on you. And you're coming through, and that's not a criticism of what you're doing, because I really, it's more a statement on your success that we could now make it a real program. Counselor Duhae.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo that. I am not going to go through the, although I should, the litany of congratulations for the outstanding work that you do, because I've said it so many times that, because I haven't said it on television, but we do have a wonderful library system. I would like to echo Counsel Seier's point and ask that at some time that you have a summit meeting with the superintendent of schools included also, because she is very much involved with the planning of homework centers through the school department. And the whole homework center, the work that you're doing and the work that Human Services is doing and so forth, we ought to be exchanging ideas and so forth among those departments.
There is a collaborative effort, not effort, there's collaborative work going on constantly with the school department. For example, the children's librarians at the main library together with all the librarians of the school system meet regularly. They conduct a joint summer reading program. We print and publish a joint printed book list and ends up in a major program sometime in August. So we have that going on all the time. We work, if you look at the reference narrative in here, you'll see that the reference department works with at least 40 or 50 of the teachers at the high school, where the teachers themselves come in with the whole class of children, and there's a whole hour of library orientation in terms of the use of the public catalog, books, and the reference materials. And we are increasingly, I mean, as Mr. Seier's saying, at Central Square, you can go into the main library any afternoon or evening, and you'll find 40, 50, 60 teenagers seriously writing reports on some serious school assignments.
Let me just, let me just say this. I know that all of that is going on, and I was just identifying with this particular request. I would also like to, you know, I think it would be interesting to do some kind of a survey between, again, between these three departments, the Human Services, the School Department, the library, and take one elementary school, K to 8, with 500 kids in it or 700 kids in it, and find out from every one of those kids what those kids are doing after school, so that you would have a, you would look at a pattern. How many of the 800 or 500 are in the library? How many are in sports? How many are with their aunt or their grandmother, and so on and so forth? In a sense, looking at it not from what you're doing, but from what the children need, if you understand my...
I understand.
Yeah, okay. That's a completely different way of looking at the problem and so on. The time is late, and I have a number of little comments that I want to make.
Counselor Duhae, it was, Mr. Healy, way back in '74, I believe, organized a committee on leisure services, and he mandated that the, that the community schools director, the recreational director, the library director, and the youth services director meet regularly to discuss the services that we provide to avoid the duplication, to see that each of the groups of the city were being programmed.
Right.
And so, you know, it's a good idea, and I think it can work.
Thank you.
And I think it's a great idea.
Now, I have had a number of comments about the bookmobile. Am I saying a number, six to 10 probably telephone calls? And I noticed that in the budget book, and you just mentioned that there were 149 users of the bookmobile, although the budget book says 142. And the bookmobile circulation last year was 20,000. And I think those must be extraordinary readers. 142 people reading 20,000 books. Is that, somehow that can't be right, is it? That's 10, how many is that? 10, that's 100, 200 books a person. I mean, they are great readers.
Well, here it is.
Excuse me, Counselor Duhae.
I hate to think about what the mailing costs would be.
Counselor Duhae, I have a friend who's a senior citizen who reads that many books all the time. She gets bags of books from the bookmobile.
Right, I think.
Probably their best customer.
Well, the, there are 149 users of, and 10, six to 10 have talked to me about how important this is. And I, is the bookmobile back in use now?
No.
It's been phased out. I mean, this is this year's budget year, not next year's budget year, but next year's budget year doesn't start until July 1st, right? You know the names of all the regular users of the bookmobiles?
Yes, sir.
And have they all been sent a letter or memo saying what the new service, describing what the new service will...
We have talked to, we have, we sent a letter, we've already talked to them.
You've sent a letter to all 149?
Not all 149. We sent, I believe, about 100 letters.
Have gone out?
Yes, sir.
And the other 42 are going out?
I think some of those members of the 42, we've already talked to.
You've talked with them?
Right.
And what has been their reaction to this?
Once the, we went down to 100 Memorial Drive, which is, which had maybe seven users every week, circulating 16 books every week. And we talked with a few of those people, and we told them the services that the van can provide, a deposit of books, and any of those persons who are elderly or infirm or handicapped, and they've accepted it and they love it, absolutely. We had two elderly persons in Huron Towers that Counsel Russell was familiar with. We met with Huron Towers, and we talked to those persons. They weren't infirm, they weren't handicapped, but we have a delivery of books there now every four weeks. Absolutely happy.
Yeah, how often?
I didn't hear.
How often did you say that the book...
Once every four weeks. We deliver about 60 to 100 books.
And there's a little collection there on site.
Right, there's a bookcase, and there's a little sign that says, "Courtesy of the Cambridge Public Library." We have had maybe five persons call the library concerned, and three of whom were handicapped or unable or were sick. One here at the corner of the Hotel Command across the street, one down Memorial Drive. And Mrs. Dillon's taking care of them, and they absolutely love the service. The figures that you see did not include the, did not include the Department of Transportation, the 20,000, but the, the 20,000 includes Department of Transportation, includes the affiliate housing for Harvard and MIT, it includes the Draper Lab, and it includes the, so it did...
Why were we, I mean, why were we stopping in all, I mean, if this is such a service, why were we stopping in all these places? Why couldn't those people who are graduate students, whoever write to the library, but they can go to a branch library or to the regular library? Why were we doing this if it was such an inefficient...
I think the, Counselor Duhae, is that we had a bookmobile, and I probably didn't have the courage to come to the city manager early on and say, "Look at, we got six branch libraries in six square miles, seven libraries, not six, seven libraries in six square miles, all right? And we don't need it."
All right, so the...
So we got seven libraries in six square miles, and all the bookmobile stops, we had to use the bookmobile and at least defend it in terms of some measure of productivity. And we found the Department of Transportation, we found the affiliate housing.
How did you find the Department of Transportation?
What about all these books that are in the subways? Is that program still going?
The subway is, oh yes, very much alive. We got eight...
Why should we be doing a program in the subway?
It's free. I mean, the books are free, the service...
I mean, if we have a grant to do that.
No, gifts. And the people are doing it themselves now, all right? We get literally thousands of gift books a year. Come next month, or the middle of this month and the end of next month, we'll be the recipient of thousands of paperback books. Originally, it was a grant that got it started. And then we began to get gifts, and we started to put gifts. We have the chauffeur, the library chauffeur goes down two days a week and fill it. But we find now that a couple of patrons have put signs, "Please keep it filled."
So that just replenishes itself?
So it's replenishing itself.
Okay.
And we get 10 to 15 letters every week from Cambridge residents who are really pleased with the service.
Well, the answer on the bookmobile is that for senior citizens and handicapped people will receive a personal service.
I guarantee that, Counsel, guarantee it.
Okay, and that that is in the budget, and we're going to take, you're going to take a look at this. Now, what happens, you know, after you have taken this money from this nice woman who was 100 years old, this new bookmobile that you allowed her to raise money?
I wasn't here, Counsel.
Oh, you weren't?
No, you...
Oh, okay, somebody did.
You did that.
What happens to the bookmobile now? Does it get turned over to Mr. Jones for his ancient car collection, or?
No, we haven't talked to the manager about that. I don't know that the manager has use for it. Maybe he does or doesn't. But I think it's something that is...
Is it on its last legs?
No, not on its last leg, but pretty...
Last wheels.
Not for a book, not for a regular service. It breaks down, you wait a week for the man to come in from Attleboro to come in and look at it, and then he's got to go back and get a part. And, you know, it's just discouraging.
Okay, well, no more. Are there any areas where if we got into emergency, the financial situations over the next several years, and we were faced, which we hope we won't be, with a situation as some cities and towns are, where we have to come up against hard times financially, are there any areas where fees could be increased or used?
Well, we've done a good job, we've done a good job in the library. We don't, we've not instituted any fees, but we picked up a new $30,000 a year two years ago from the state. And the state's not reneged on it, they've continued to give the city. So we've gone from a $70,000 grants and aid from the state to well over $100,000. We've increased the, because of the substantial increase in fine, in the usage of the library or fine collections, for example, last year at this point in time was about $36,000, and I believe, I believe we're almost $8,000 more this time. We get so many gifts, we've put a couple of shelves out in the library lobby so that we've got a book sales going on every day, which has brought in another $5,000, $6,000. So, and when you look at the library budget, I believe there's about $444,000 in that library budget that comes either from state grants and aid, or the cherry seeds, or from fines, or from book collections, or photocopy machine. Well, that's, that's, that's...
But if there were an emergency, and we had to kind of start slashing departments...
Would there be, if there was an emergency and we had to start slashing departments? There's no way that you could triple or quadruple the fees, income from fees.
It's always been represented that the, sort of the heart of the library system is a free, free system that really does not lend itself to fee generation.
Mr. Seki and I, Mr. Seki and I gave up that philosophical debate several years ago because he really believes that it is a free public library system, and to make it a revenue generator is...
Well, so do I. I mean, but I'm just, I'm...
I think, you know, rotation of certain days that branches could be closed would be one way to attack it if we ever got to that situation.
Okay.
Incidentally, Counsel...
Let me just move on. I don't want to necessarily dwell on the, I have just two or three other points that I want. We've been talking about non-Cambridge people in our various institutions, like the schools and the hospital and so forth, and now they're invading the library. And the, I take it they're just sitting quietly at desks, because if they were using books, you would undoubtedly have a separate charge for non-residents, wouldn't you?
No, Counselor, it's a two-way process. You get the state aid that we get in Cambridge, and it's predicated on reciprocal borrowing. For example, more...
Are you saying that legally we can't charge non-residents?
Yeah, you can't do it legally unless you want to abrogate or give up the money that you're getting from the state, okay? Number one.
Non-residents are allowed to borrow books?
That's right.
And our residents are allowed to borrow books?
We have almost 10,000 Cambridge residents who are registered as Boston Public Library users.
At no charge?
No charge. We just, a year ago instituted almost a $3 million computer system, which cost Cambridge maybe, I believe, about $150,000 because of the consortium with Boston, Cambridge, Bookline, and Newton. And we, most of that money came from the state and from the feds because of the consortium. We, because of the consortium, we borrow almost 500 books a month from Bookline, Newton, and Boston, free of charge. We pick up almost $60,000 a year in the use of 16-millimeter films because of...
So would you say that we easily benefit as much from these cooperative arrangements as we pay out?
Yes, we do. There is one, yes, we do, except for, except for Somerville.
Except for Somerville?
Right.
Which people don't flock to the Somerville library system, is that what you're saying?
That's right, they come here.
The, with regard to this computer... Uh, the, uh, with regard to this computer, is the library fully mechanized and computerized?
Hopefully, the, uh, I think, not Cam, not Cambridge, the Observatory Hill Library, I expect, will go online sometime this summer, and the Mount Auburn Library will go online after we've cleaned it up and the new furniture comes in, probably by September. East Cambridge is online, the Valenti Library's online, the Main Library is online, Central Square, North Cambridge is online. It's a fantastic computer system, for example, it can tell us, we, Donald does all the work on that thing, but it can tell us the number of children who use the library from each of the precincts and wards in the city and their ages.
You might find that a valuable document in getting budgets passed.
Okay, for example, it, it tells us that we got thirty-four percent of the users of the Main Library live in mid-Cambridge. Ten percent of the users of the Main Library come from East Cambridge, seventeen percent from the Central Square and Cambridge Port area.
Well, does it keep track of the books?
And it keeps track of books, so that you've got a book-
And the periodicals?
If, it keeps track of books and periodicals, if you're, it's overdue, and you come in with the books, it lights up and tells us these books are overdue and you shouldn't loan them.
So it's really, it's really a useful tool, it isn't, uh-
Well, useful tool, it'll have a printout, for example, like we did a printout recently to wanna know what, whether our book selection is really working, whether the two hundred thousand we spend on books a year, whether we're doing the right books, or right selection in terms of circulation. And, and we're right, it tells us that the number one bestseller in, in the use of books in Cambridge is, is healthcare books. Healthcare, exercise, cancer, it tells us the, that the biography's the second, third most, and that political history's third in Cambridge, and so forth. So it helps in book selection as well.
Do you have a, the people who use our library care carefully for the books, or do you have?
We, we have a, the people who come in to use libraries are very responsible.
Borrowers.
We, we, we have no major, you know, fifty thousand dollars in overdos, I don't know how many that's translated, number of books that are overdue, but when you're circulating seven hundred thousand books, it seems like we're not losing too many books, and they were, the big problem is wear and tear. And libraries in Cambridge have, you know, I've listened to Mr. Duhae and Mr. Seer and Mayor Wolf, the manager agrees, you know, we have a high credibility in Cambridge, but that's true of our libraries. For example, in Framingham recently, we wanted to override two and a half. The town insisted, the library insisted that the city, that the town list each item for each override, and the only override item that was effectuated in Framingham was the library item. All the others were defeated. I suspect that the story that you saw on this morning's Globe, I suspect, they're gonna use the Worcester Public Library as the focal point in the override for two and a half. Libraries generally have high credibility in towns, they produce service, they don't wave any flags, they're a group of dedicated people.
Just a, just a couple more questions, two or three more. The, uh, the trust funds, the library trust funds, are we using all the income from the library trust funds?
We, uh, not, no, we, we've not touched the trust funds, we used the history fund this year to, to, to publish the, the Cambridge history book. But while we use that fund, we went out and raised an additional three thousand dollars, which was put back into the fund.
When I say the, we don't use the, I didn't, I meant the income from the funds.
Yeah, there's not much-
We use the income from the fund.
Well, we, we use the, the income from the history trust fund, we've used the income from the library benefit fund, the others are not so large that, that the income, the, the principal is not large enough that generated enough income.
So you're not leaving money in the trust, a lot of income in the, in the library trust funds, unused? Well, let me just put it this way, how much money-
For example, we have a trust-
Let me ask the director of the budget, how much money is in the library trust funds annually unused?
I would have to take a look at the annual financial report, but I would say it's very small, because in most of the trust funds, the principal, which cannot be spent, is small, therefore it takes two, three years for that interest to grow, and as soon as it gets to a number that Joe feels he can go out and use, he usually gets a hold of Mr. Maloney right away, and we spend it right down.
Okay, so you get reports of that, you're on top of that, and when you gotta-
Every month, we get budget reports.
Yeah, Mr. Maloney's done a good job, and for nineteen years, we've been trying to get a printout on the trust funds, and the last three years, we've been getting regular printouts, so we're grateful to Mr. Maloney for that.
I, I was aware of that. Now, with regard to this history that you just talked about, what, what was that, that history?
We, we commissioned the, it was the centennial year of the library, as you know, last year, and so we commissioned a history of the Cambridge Public Library-
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
-to be written.
I'm, I'm talking, I, I'm very interested in a history of Cambridge of the, in the, of the twentieth century, and, and, and as important as the history of the library is, I have put in a request that the Historical Commission and the library consider raising funds for writing a history of Cambridge for the twentieth century, and by the time that this money is raised and the historian is engaged and the book is written and so forth, the, the decade will have ended, and we will have available a full account of twentieth century. We really need that, and there are plenty of, of, of social and historians around who I think would be very glad to take that assignment, and you could have some kind of a contest or something, but is, is that, is that possible?
I've written a, a paper for the Historical Commission on, on, on how to raise the money, talking about at least a hundred thousand dollars for the writer, three-year book, you're talking about another fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to publish the book, it's not gonna be a bestseller, as you know, okay, so you're talking about a hundred and-
Well, certainly if it's like the last one on the nineteenth century, it won't be, it's very opaque.
No.
Well, I, I, I hope that this, I hope that, that, I, I just wanted to raise that question, and, and I will take it up with the Historical Commission again at some, at some other point. Now, one final question on, on the records, we have a microfilming of the rec, ongoing of the records, and are you involved with the analysis of the city of Cambridge records?
No, none at all.
From all the departments?
None at all. It's a serious problem, not the, the, the archival retention of city reports-
Yeah, that's what I'm interested in.
-is, is, it's almost criminal in Cambridge, it really is. I mean, we've, you know, you've got, you've got the, the files of a number of council people in the last eight years, and these are significant files in terms of, you know, the Harvard Square and what's happening, and they're gonna be totally lost. You've got a number of reports that the, that the community development have published, important reports, you know, for example, the social characteristics that they published about eight years ago, it's a very invaluable document, and yet you can, you can hardly find a copy anywhere in the city. The archival, you know, we commissioned somebody during the CETA period to do a, a biographical history of Cambridge streets and squares, and we used CETA funds with that person, and she was a professional researcher, and, you know, she spent six months, she couldn't find stuff.
Well, I, I-
So it is a, a problem. I know Charlie Sullivan recently brought together a group of people to discuss this issue of archival retention, and we've got Harvard and, and MIT and a few other places, the archivists from those places who are coming back, giving us, giving us a little report, but, you know, given the, the, the urgency of the day-by-day operation of the library and, and the staffing requirements, I wasn't about ready to go to the manager and ask for an archivist.
I think that the, I think that we have to address this problem, and I think I will ask the city manager through some kind of written report to, outside the budget process, to ask you and the Historical Commission and the city manager's office to, to get together and think through this problem of what we have to do to build up and retain these materials. And just one final question, on, uh, we have a, a habit of naming streets, squares, and so forth, and sometimes we've named squares and put up a sign with the person's name that we have a square, and then there's no information about the person for whom the square or the street or anything is named.
That's disgraceful.
Is that, is that information collected in any place that you-
This is the, I, this is the information that we wanted to gather during the CETA period, and it was difficult. There's no index, you usually find it in council resolutions that are introduced, but there's no index to the council resolutions. And I know a few years ago, when I first came here, we got Jimmy Sullivan to issue an order to, uh, have the clerks in any department to issue resolutions relating to streets to send copy to the library, but we never did, and it's difficult to me.
So, so your department would not have any systematic, uh, collection of information?
No, I think the-
I think, you know, it's been, it's been my feeling for a long time that any time we name a square for someone, and we've just done that the, the other night-
They've done that since you've, you've requested that, they've done it in this way.
No, well, I mean, even on the square itself, there should be a little plaque with two or three sentences saying, "Mr. Jones or Mr. Smith, so forth, lived, lived his life on Norfolk Street and was very interested in, and so on and so forth," or whatever this, whatever the person who's, who's, uh, whose work for the community is, is celebrated by the naming of something, there ought to be just two or three lines, and that, and the full information ought to be, otherwise we lose our whole history.
Yep, you've lost it in a lot of places.
And, and do you, and, do you, you don't have anything to do with keeping all these paintings around that sometimes appear and then disappear off the walls of the city or the city hall and the city hall annex?
No.
There's nothing in your, you don't have anything to do with those?
We, we've got the, probably the most singular expert on Cambridge political and social history in the city next to Elliot Spaulding, and that's this guy here, excuse me, Donald York, and he can probably address more of those problems than I can.
Well, I think that this is, that possibly we could take this up in a, in another subcommittee, because this is a, this is also an interest of mine, and I think that we've, we can't relate to all any more, more, any more time of the budget session to this, to this sort of thing, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor, if I, just may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that Mr. Seki didn't do this directly, but there is a, a council index of council resolutions, and there always has been.
Thank you. As everybody's aware, we are starting to run late, and doing the habit that has-
It's only ten-thirty.
-appears to be becoming the tradition, which is the later we get, the further away we move from budget issues. If we hope to not beat our two o'clock record of the, two days ago, or, a week ago, I would just hope, it does seem like two days ago, it seems like we've been meeting constantly for the last week.
Mr. Chairman?
Stick to issues.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say, if we don't break the record tonight, we may well do it tomorrow night, so.
Okay. I'm, I believe I've been recognized. Mr. Seki?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm, I hope these will be fairly succinct questions with similar answers. The cable television office is located in the library, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Now, what, as succinctly as we can, is the mission of the Cambridge Public Library?
The mission of the Cambridge Public Library is to provide information, reading books to a citizens of Cambridge. It's to help educate, it's to help people, get people to read books, it's to provide information to people, it's to provide recreational information, recreation materials to people.
In this regard, does it attempt to specialize in any way, or does it simply buy books of a general nature for a general public?
Oh, no, sir, no, 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 we, we, we have, a large amount of our resources are in the children's area, so we need children, professional children librarians, professional librarians who've been trained to-
I'm speaking to the books themselves.
The books themselves are carefully selected.
All right, and would you say then they, they emphasize children's books, is, is that?
No, we, we choose a wide variety of books, each of the divisions within the library has a budget, and, and the children's department, the Main Library has a budget, as the, as the Central Square Library has a budget, and we run a fairly liberal, liberal book selection policy at the, at the Cambridge Library. We let each of the facilities choose their own books, for example, at the-
Do you have any notion in that choice of books, how it's informed by public use or interest?
Well, absolutely, by the number of circulations each of the books has. We also know this by the book reviews, there are at least a half a dozen children's book reviews from the book list by the American Library Association, the book list from the Horn Book, a book list from the Library Journal, and these book lists cover literally all of the best children's literature that is published.
Okay.
And the children's librarians look at these reviews, select these reviews commensurate with the, with the neighborhood's interest. So we have Spanish books and Haitian books, and we've got Greek books at the Central Square Library, for example, and Spanish books as well. But we know the ethnic diversity of Cambridge, so we've got a large variety of, of books that, that, that in the children's area for cross-cultural education and recreational reading, and same with the videotapes as well. And in the adult books, for example, at the, at the Valenti Library, we, we buy a lot of Portuguese books, we buy a lot of Italian books, in addition to materials that, that the community relates to. We generally buy almost any book that a patron requests, if it's not more than forty or fifty dollars, and the reviews are good.
What do we, with our annual acquisitions of this type budget, would, for the city, would be approximately what? My materials don't appear to-
We, we, we buy, we buy about, we buy about twenty-five thousand titles, not, not titles, twenty-five thousand books a year.
For a cost of approximately what?
About two-hundred-and-eighty, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars.
Now, with this, specifically at the Main Library, you have an interesting stack situation, where you seem to retain relatively current books on the first floor, and then in the stack, but, of any type or title, and then in the stacks, you seem to sort of keep the same, the, the older books of any type or title, it's somewhat an unusual system to me.
No, it's, it's a, it's a space problem. The Cambridge Library, the Main Library, is probably no more than forty thousand square feet, when in fact you need something like eighty, a hundred thousand square feet, all right?
Well, I, it seemed, I deciphered that there is a space problem, so I'm coming to the cable office, I don't understand quite how in, I think you have quite a space crunch at the Main Library, so I'm wondering, when you, when the cable office was located there, or the studio was located there, you seemed to be very tight previously. I, I don't prefer the stacked situation you have, you might have-
Yeah, I don't like me either.
-get that.
All those-
But it seems to me that you, with the cable office there, you're even more reduced in space, which basically means anybody looking for a book at the main branch has to look in both current offerings and upstairs, and exactly what defines current.
The cable office has, uh, maybe three hundred square feet, and the cable studios probably got two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and that's about all that they have, and they're a really unusable space.
It was unusable space?
Absolutely.
What, what was the matter with it?
The-
They're using it, so I, you said they're unusable space or unusable space?
Unusable space.
All right.
I mean, the cable office is up in the, in the third level, which has historically been locked and closed and never used, and that's where the cable office, then they got a little studio space in the, in the rear of the lecture hall, which is about three hundred square feet of space or less, two, six, eight, maybe a hundred square feet for the studio space. The lecture hall is primarily used for library purposes, and it's filled maybe at least three nights a week with fellow-
So the studio sort of comes down and goes back up, is that?
No, the studio is always in place. Excuse me, I didn't mean studio, I mean the control, the control-
Well, the curtains and the whatnot, is that always in place or no?
It's always in place, all right, and we use that space- And we use that space, we use that space every day of the week, and unless there's a conflict or the city council wishes to use it. But we have an author series once a week, we have the children parties and children programming there because of the space limitation downstairs in the children's room. We have music programs, we have our afternoon with books, which is an elderly program introducing elderly to book reviews.
Are those largely held downstairs or in this lecture hall?
In the lecture hall.
Okay, I'm really coming to the end of my questions. I had an interesting thing occur from a council order that I submitted in February requesting that the library purchase a suitable number of copies on Eyes on the Prize Two and the accompanying materials, and the book that went with that. And I got back a very nice letter telling me, well, you already had Eyes on the Prize, three copies and the book. But the letter said Eyes on the Prize Two, which isn't available yet, so-
Not available, the second series is not printed yet.
Yes, so it was a very quick and sort of off-the-cuff reply, but in fact, it's not correct. It doesn't exist, although the supporting materials do exist. So I would like to recommend that we do attempt to get them when they are available, but it was not possible to have yet. What was responded to me is that we have.
We can't keep that material in the library, for example, during, it's unfortunate, but we, during Black History Month, every, literally every elementary and secondary school student in the city, white, black, whatever color, are writing reports either on the Civil Rights Movement and/or the Martin Luther King. And on the, you know, Eyes on the Prize is, as you know, is, you know, an outstanding series on the whole of the Civil Rights Movement. And we can't keep those tapes in during those four weeks. But yes, our people are on top of that situation.
Okay, I appreciate it. And the opportunity exists, I don't, we obviously have to conserve funds, but that is a series as well that there may be foundations which would also provide them at low or no cost.
The city's been very, very lucky, the library has and the city has, you know, the MacArthur Foundation, I guess, gave the Cambridge Public Library about sixty thousand dollars worth of videotapes for about three thousand dollars a few years ago. And those tapes included all the British Broadcasting Series on Shakespeare, gave us the Heritage of the Jewish Fate, a ten-part series, it gave us the series on the U.S. Constitution, a thirteen series, it gave us the Franklin History of Civilization series, it gave us the Bill Moyes series on the essence of-
It would appear that we're rich in videotapes. Your response, though, did cue one last question. You have a room, which is called the Cambridge Room, at the Main Library upstairs, which is our, I'd call it alleged historic collection. I think I would join Council Duhey and probably those others of us who are quite interested in the history of Cambridge, that between the Historical Commission and the library, the comprehensiveness of the collection on Cambridge leaves something to be desired.
I wholeheartedly agree.
And if its funding specifically or approach, and there is something somewhat limited in the idea that you can ask to see a book there, and it really has to do with whether or not there's someone available to take you there and sit there with you. I don't think we'll work this out in the budget hearings, but there's some, I think there was an attempt at one time to record the presence and the participation of various subgroups of the city in the city, which seemed to, it could be updated. We do miss something there, and I think even in tight money times, there's kind of a basic expectation that history, that Cambridge in its main public library is at least keeping tabs on itself and collecting its important materials between the library and the Historical Commission. I know the Historical Commission sort of has its own point of view of what it's doing, but many researchers who come to look up information on Cambridge would do so both through Widener and through that main branch library, and what they would find at the main branch with respect to the history, and even a review of what's happened in the last thirty, forty years, it has some big holes.
I agree.
Madam Chairman?
Council Walsh.
I think you do an excellent job in the library, Mr. Seki.
I didn't hear.
I said I think you do an excellent job, your library's a well-run, and everybody praises you. I was just, when I was looking at the budget, I saw a section called Job Enrichment, and it talked about the staff participating in conceptual developmental and evaluative stages of service ideas and process. Is there something going on where your staff comes up with new and creative ideas for the library?
No, we, that's David Shaw in the circulation department, and, and we, you know, I meet with the managers almost not regularly, but we meet often enough. And the idea was to see an incentive to the staff to get involved in the decision process, and to see whether they had any ideas, either in the improvement in delivery of library services, or improvement in the way we do things, or the improvement in the efficiency of the, of the, of the service. And David was willing to take it on and deal with that with his staff, and, and I think it was an excellent idea, and we work with David, we'll watch to see what happens, to see what kind of incentive in terms of added productivity or added circulation or added use of certain materials that we want people to use. Because while we're an educational force, there are materials that we like people to read about.
Sure.
You know, not just the recreational reading, we like to push and promote, you know, some of the great issues of the day, and get people to read it. And so each of them, I think one staff member's always recommended a way in which we can publicize certain book materials and get them to circulate, so.
I think it's a very good idea and a creative idea, and I wish more departments would take that approach. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Council Myers.
Thank you. I want, first of all, I'd like to commend you, Mr. Seki. I believe that you're the first department head who has come here and voluntarily offered the information that you're aggressively pursuing affirmative action goals, and I really appreciate that, I think that's something well worth noting. I think you run very good program, very good, we have a very good library system. I don't want to repeat the remarks that have been stated by the other councilors, I would just say that the, it's very interesting, the, the kind of program or semi-program that you have for young people, and I think you would want to take a look at connecting with other resources, although maybe one of the things that's very attractive about it is that it is not a formal program, and the kids can just go there in the after-school time and at their own leisure and use it as a resource. So I think that you're, it's a very good program. I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to move this budget forward to the city council.
On the question-
On the, oh, Mr. Jones.
Joe Seki's doing a good job, but I got a couple of questions I want to ask you. When I toured the city, you have a, the comfort stations open down in Berkshire Street. Those Portuguese people told me last year when I was walking around, no comfort stations down there, is that true?
No, we have a comfort station. Yes, we do. We have the usage of the, of the Valenti Library, Mr. Jones.
Okay. Now, that bookmobile, I hope that don't end up in air mass up in the junkyard. I hope the auxiliary fire department gets it. They need a lighting plant, Mr. Manager, very bad. Why don't you give it to the auxiliary fire department? Do you ever think of that, Mr. Seki?
Well, I'll discuss that with the manager, Mr. Jones.
Okay, I hope you do. Now, one more question. When I, tell me, do you have the Lowell Sun up there in the Lawrence Journal? I, no, I go over to Boston quite often, the State House, you have the Lowell Sun? I enjoy reading-
No, we don't have the Providence Journal, maybe we should-
No, the Lowell Sun, and the Lawrence Journal.
No, we don't have the Lowell Sun. We've never had anyone request it, Mr. Jones.
No, I enjoy reading about Mr. Campbell up there.
On the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seki.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the city manager's going to look back at that budget with regard to the staffing and also the Saturday opening or part-day opening for the summer.
It has been requested that we skip over the human services budget until we deal with the three smaller budgets before it.
So moved.
Okay. Are there any budgets of which we will not be asking, the councilors have no questions?
Veterans.